It is six o'clock on August 4th, 2022, and I will call this City of Lacey City Council Meeting to order. Our first item is if you are able, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, thank you all for being here, and our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda and consent agenda items. Can I get a motion?
It's moved to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes, and we will move into our next agenda items, which is public recognitions and presentations. Our first, well, I guess, agenda item number four, public comment. It looks like we do have one person who has signed up for public comment, and it looks like Chris Perazzo is that person here. Please come up to the podium. You can issue your public comment. Please try to, please first state your name and city that you live in, and please try to keep your comment to three minutes.
Sure. My name is Chris Perazzo, and I live over in Meridian Campus in Lacey, and I am the Vice President of MCRWA Homeowners Association, which has about 1,600 homes. And we have a problem that we are looking to council help to solve. For the past couple of years, our management team, VICE management, has communicated with the city and with the school district trying to get water on Track K Parkway. Currently, we had 15 trees there. Three have already died. Last night, we got so desperate getting water to this area that we had a volunteer in our neighborhood, Lacey Binwash came and put water at each of the trees that are about to die. There's no water hookup for them. When the city and the school district developed a street on Campus Glen, which is right across from Salish Middle School, they didn't make a connection to the water. The water's piped into Salish Middle School, but there's no way to pipe it in. It's all sprinklers all the way down Campus Glen for these trees. And it used to have grass in that area, too, and right now, it's just weeds. It looks terrible. We met with Tom Stires and looked at blueprints. There's no way to connect. We reached out many, many times to the school district, and a couple of times, we even had our lawyer write up an agreement. If we could put three systems into their water, pay for the water, we would be happy to. And we had our lawyer write up an agreement, and two times, they declined us. So now, I don't know where else to go, and I'm looking for the system to work for us and to have your representatives help us find a way to get water into those trees, because I predict three more will die this season. It's just terrible. We landscaped the whole hillside on Track K, spent thousands of dollars to do that. We did a drip line system and did it very water-wise, but there's no way to connect. The water pressure's too low. We would have to dig hundreds of miles through the street and make new water connections, and it's just so, so expensive. And I don't feel like, as a homeowners association, it was really fair to us to have no say in the matter. It was just given to us, here, take care of it, with no water. And I'm at my wit's end. I'm on the landscape committee and have worked very, very hard to try to make this area beautiful for our neighborhood. I know it sounds sort of silly, but it's not silly. It's right across from our middle school, and it just looks terrible. So I'm asking the council, please, 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 show us that representation matters and help me find a solution to this terrible problem.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Is it where the trailers used to be for the contractor when they were building that?
I haven't lived here that long. I do not know. I don't know. So right now, the Parkway is, like I said, where this grass was. It's all weeds. The grass has died, and now the trees are dying. I would love, maybe if we can cement it in, maybe the city has a grant or something. There's just no way to get even a drip line system to put kinnik-kinnik in there without the school district's agreement to have us tap into their water. One of you has an idea. Help me.
Thank you for your comment, and I see here that you have your contact information on the sheet, and our city manager is already making notes, so I have no doubt that you will be reached. And if, maybe if there is some kind of solution, something that can work, we can, we can work something out.
Okay, because otherwise, I just don't know what we're going to do. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is proclamation, and tonight we have the honor of honoring someone who is with us tonight. We are going to be recognizing the 100th birthday of retired Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Army Barbara Nichols tonight. So we have a City of Lacey proclamation that we would like to read aloud and share with you prior to handing it over to you. And we will start with Councilmember Vasquez.
Whereas Barbara Nichols, who has traced her ancestry back to the 1620 voyage of the Mayflower and is a descendant of John Howland, with her family military history dating back to the Revolutionary War, and?
Whereas Barbara Nichols has served her country with pride, kindness, and generosity. First, working as a nose module installer on the Boeing B-17 in Seattle, joining the U.S. Nurse Corps in 1944, serving in the U.S. Army's 855th MASH unit in Korea, on to the Vietnam War, and military hospitals in Germany, Washington State, and the Walter Reed Army Medical Center in our nation's capital, and?
Whereas Barbara Nichols is a retired Lieutenant Colonel of the U.S. Army, who has traveled the world to serve her country and provide life-saving care throughout her career, and?
Whereas Barbara Nichols received the Bronze Star for her heroic, skilled, and dedicated service as a battlefield nurse in the Vietnam War, and whereas Barbara Nichols has a love for Washington State and Mount Rainier, and?
Whereas Barbara Nichols is the oldest living field battle nurse from World War II, the Korean War, and the Vietnam War, and whereas Barbara Nichols will celebrate her 100th birthday, August 19th, 2022, and?
And now, therefore, I, Malcolm Miller, Deputy Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the City of Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim August as Barbara Nichols Month. In the City of Lacey, and we encourage citizens of Lacey, community members, local veterans, and local veteran organizations to celebrate Barbara Nichols' 100th birthday and learn more about the history of World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the service of men and women who were at Barbara's side throughout those years. Thank you so much. If you don't mind, I would like to have you come forward, if at all possible, or just representatives. Here we go.
Hi. I have these flowers for you. Thank you so much for your service in three wars spanning, it appeared to be, at least 50 years. And then I also have for you an official City of Lacey proclamation declaring this month Barbara Nichols Month in the City of Lacey.
Oh, my, thank you. Can I?
Would you like to say a few words, or do you have?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You want to turn around and face the people, and then you can say whatever you feel I say.
Mary, you should be right here.
That's fine.
I've been thinking to myself, I cannot believe I have hit 100 years old. And here I am. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I've been living in California somewhat, but then we lived in Seattle, Queen Anne High School in Seattle, and whatever. I went on active duty with the Army, and all the places that. Just recently retired completely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, one and all. I salute you.
Yay!
The next item on our agenda is the mayor's report. And in this mayor's report, we have the 2022-23 school year youth council appointees. The youth council has been in action for four years. This is the fourth youth council that we have, and I think we're lucky to have a youth council in the city, and I'm so glad that it got put together, because we have, you know, direct representation from the kids in our community to tell us, you know, what it is they are hoping for, what they would like to see. And I particularly like engaging them in civics, because we could be growing and producing our own replacements, which would be pretty cool. So our appointees list consists of, well, I'll defer to Councilmember Vasquez, who was actually, did some of the, did all of the interviews with Mayor Reiter. Is that right? Okay. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I guess I can just share a little bit about the application process. So the youth council was really active last year despite some challenges related to remote, you know, having to participate remotely. They were able to get together toward the end of the year. But we did a lot of outreach to make sure that people knew that we were recruiting, and so we had a good pool of interested young people from all of the schools across Lacey. And we asked them questions. We got to interview them in, like, panels and groups. So, you know, we asked them, if you were hosting someone, like a guest or a visitor to Lacey, what would you tell people about what Lacey's like? You know, and it was great to hear the answers from kids who either lived here their whole lives or kids that have, you know, moved here and are experiencing Lacey having come from somewhere else. You know, they, they had a lot to say about how beautiful our parks are, and how good our restaurants are, and the things that they really appreciated about the city. And we also asked them questions about what they were proudest of in terms of their personal accomplishments, and what they thought a good team member needed to act like or be like. And so it was an excellent process, and I appreciate Kelly Adams for kind of guiding us and facilitating that process, the city staff person who helped us with that. And I'm really excited about this new crop of Lacey youth council members, and I'm excited to work with them, because they have a lot of energy and great ideas for how we can support our community.
Thank you. If it's all right with you guys, I'd like to read the names of the new council members for the youth. And I went over these names earlier. I tried not to slaughter these names. First, we have Justin Begley from Timberline High School, Alanis Blackburn from River Ridge High School, Rianna Joseph from River Ridge, Nathan Miller from Pope John Paul II High School, Keegan Bolt from River Ridge High School, Janine Bermudez from Timberline, Abigail Assari from North Thurston High School, Sarah Towne from North Thurston High School, Ayana Young from North Thurston High School, Hunter Akalyria from River Ridge, that was the one I practiced earlier tonight, Rory Line from Timberline High School, Kiara Coleman from Timberline, Nathaniel Clay from Timberline, Zorias Day Ramirez Placensa from North Thurston High School. And those are our new representatives on the Lacey Youth Council. So congratulations, if you guys are out there watching. And go ahead, city manager, you have something? And go ahead, City Managers, you have something?
Was it going to be a motion and a second?
Oh, right. Sorry.
I would move to approve the Lacey Youth Council 2022-2023 appointees.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there, is there any further discussion? No? Okay. Well, seeing none, then all in favor of appointing the new Lacey Youth Council? Please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Seeing none, then that motion carries, and congratulations to the names on this list. Our next agenda item is going to be our City Managers' Report, and I will turn that over to our City Manager, Scott.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and City Council. We have one item before you, which is an MOU for Young Child and Family Center of Lacey, and Jennifer Burridge, the Parks, Culture, and Recreation Director, will come on and provide that information.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you tonight, as the City Manager said, is a recommendation to authorize the City Manager to sign an MOU between North Thurston Public Schools, South Sound YMCA, and the City of Lacey, which would set in motion a feasibility study for a Young Child and Family Center of Lacey, and solidify a partnership that could potentially make this happen. I do have some slides to share with you this evening, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Just a moment to share my screen here. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Yes.
So with the history of the school district and the city working together to, with a desire to reactivate the Nisqually or Bucknell site, and then also with the YMCA wanting to better serve the Lacey community, add in a critical early learning gap, and the three agencies came to the same table to evaluate feasibility of a Young Child and Family Center in Lacey. North Thurston Public Schools reports that one of their goals is success in the early years, and they educate regarding the benefits of early learning for those ages three to five, and the importance of involving the entire family and support system in that learning. They report that the actions on the screen here have been taken, so there are early learning programs in the district, but they point out that it's not quite enough, as at least 300 children in Lacey are not being served. There is a critical need for early learning and for indoor recreation resources in Lacey. The demand for high-quality childcare programs has outpaced industry growth for several years, with a nationwide decrease in supply starting in 2019, and then the COVID pandemic made the crisis worse. According to the Washington State Department for Children, Youth, and Families, the vast majority of North Thurston Public Schools' service area falls in within an extreme childcare access desert. This same area was significantly impacted by COVID-related operating restrictions in early learning programs. So this type of need in Lacey calls for a multi-agency approach, and for us to form creative partnerships and consider innovative solutions to filling the unique learning needs of children ages three to five, both in and outside the classroom. In addition, Lacey Parks has shared that the 2021 Parks Outreach Project showed indoor aquatics and other indoor recreation spaces coming in at the top for the public express local need. The YMCA reports they are uniquely positioned and have a real desire to better serve the Lacey community. So the partners have been putting their heads together to come up with innovative solutions and evaluating the unique learning needs of children ages three to five, and how important their learning is, as I said before, both inside and outside the classroom. If we were able to combine a learning center with a family recreation focus, we could both fill the educational gap and create opportunities to create well families, and as a result, a more healthy community. We also realize the importance of aquatic safety education starting at an early age, and the desire of families to have indoor play opportunities in Lacey. So considering the best use of the Nisqually property that the school district already owns, and understanding that typically students begin and end their learning along with the hours of the school day, but couldn't we partner to extend that learning day and also provide active wellness education to children and their supports? So we did look at early feasibility for the functions that the facility could provide. This is an aerial view of the Nisqually site, and some of the potential we see there. North Thurston Public Schools does own this property and could house the center on Marvin Road adjacent to Nisqually Middle School. So this is the Bucknell site, or Nisqually site, and at the site, this facility could provide early learning classrooms that would be equipped to serve up to 600 students annually in full-day programs. The center could also have family-friendly spaces for parenting classes, could house other organizations and agencies to provide programming related to health and wellness of young children and families. This could also include an onsite medical partner. The YMCA reports that their latest facility in Mason County does have an onsite medical provider at their facility, and that's going really well. There could be mental health services and community-based resources. The recreation components could be things like a pool, indoor playground, and other family-based physical activities. So outside, there could be a spray park and/or natural adventure playground. Project would be a financial, very heavy lift, and that's why a feasibility study must be the first step, thus the MOU before you. The estimate here on the screen is $71 million. That does include the $4 million property value that's already owned by the school district. This is, this is a footprint of what could be potentially the early learning center, 45,000 square feet of this footprint would be the classrooms, which is 23 classrooms, and then the public use could be 25,000 square feet of the space. That's the potential pool and indoor playground. And here are some photos of what those recreational amenities could look like, some play features for families. This is a couple photos of an indoor playground that's just to the north of us in Tacoma. This one happens to be open-air, but you could also close it off. This is a photo of the indoor and outdoor play adjacent to one another at the Renton Early Learning Center, and this is the spray park that's up in Tacoma that's outside the facility that has the indoor playground that you saw earlier. Just a simple spray park, but it's packed during the summer with people trying to cool off. So next steps would be approval of the MOU to review financial feasibility, and also express the intent and the commitment for the partners to work together for the holistic benefit of the Lacey community. The National Recreation and Park Association reports that there are trends of park and rec agencies providing wellness, helping to partner to provide wellness hubs for the community similar to this. Close collaboration is mutually beneficial and necessary for something like this. We are all serving the same children in the community and the same families. This would make a real and sustained impact on the life outcomes of children and families, including increased high school graduation and college completion rates, and increased child health and well-being. We do believe the initial partnership of the three agencies would help leverage to connect with other partners, such as our military partner in JBLM, a potential medical provider, as I stated earlier, and the Economic Development Council, and other essential partners. Lacey Parks is confirming public priorities as we speak. We're still in the midst of reaching out to the public to seek further insights in preparation for the 2023 Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan update, but as you know, we've got a lot of feedback last year with our Parks Outreach, and are continuing to do so, and are finding the indoor aquatics and recreation opportunities at the top for public express local need. So I appreciate your attention to this topic, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'd move to authorize the City Manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between North Thurston Public Schools, South Sound YMCA, and the City of Lacey related to the youth, the Young Child and Families Center.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, or you guys? Councilmember Stedman, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You know, it's been five or six years since Bucknell Fields was operated and ball, baseball games were there. It was sad to see it go because I knew as soon as it went, it would not return. So having said that, something like this is about the only thing that can do that site justice, to bring a brighter future, more opportunity to our youth and their families. And so that's all I can say about that. That place was special then, and it can be special again, so, but I felt something needed to be said.
Councilmember Vasquez?
I just think that this is an incredibly valuable opportunity, right? We have the Lacey Veterans Hub, which is a superb example of collaboration with a lot of different organizations serving a population that has needs in our community. This is another one of those opportunities where if we get this right, this partnership, we could be providing really important services and meeting a need for our community. So I'm so excited about this.
Yeah, some of us have seen this in other meetings and have gone over, have been asking for this for a while, and so when, when the YMCA and the school district wanted to partner with us, it was a very exciting thing to be asked to do because we've been wanting some, some indoor facilities for, for youth for a very long time, and I think, you know, once again, like, like Councilmember Stedman says, sometimes, you know, we are once again leading the way, and I'm hoping that this is, this is the first of not just one, but maybe a few of these throughout the communities in Thurston County, and we can really kind of help young people, you know, get a better foothold, get established earlier in academics and, and things like that. So it's been moved and seconded. Yeah, please.
Last thing. We're always talking about leveraging partnerships in the community, and then you hear me quite often talk about private-public partnerships, and it can be extended to, you know, tribal intergovernment relationships as well, too. So anything we need to leverage to have a brighter future for our children, we should lean on that, so.
Absolutely. It is going to take the entire village to make this thing happen, and so I'm very interested to see how it's going to turn out. Coincidentally, I got an email from General Brunson's office today inviting us to go to a, he wanted educators and, and people within the school district and people like ourselves to come up next week, and I would love to go up there and take this with us because I know that JBLM is interested in partnering with us. I've talked, when I, when we did the, the thing with Colonel Birdwell? Okay? Then, Boardwell. He said, you know, "I want to get more community involvement with the City of Lacey," and he wanted to do more with the city in that. He specifically said, you know, "Most of the, the things that they do with and for the soldiers are geared towards sending them north." And he said, "Malcolm, I need to turn that and shift that. I need to be able to send these people south because there's less congestion, there's more room to breathe, there's more, we want to see what kind of activities you guys have. What can we do to partner with you guys?" So it's interesting how, you know, one door opens and, and things start to walk through that door. So again, very exciting time. So it's been moved and seconded. Jen, did you have anything else? Okay. It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously, and we authorize the City Manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between North Thurston Public Schools, South Sound YMCA, and the City of Lacey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then that brings us on to, I think we're on to boards and commissions? Boards, commissions, and committee reports. The mayor's out of town, and I don't see any of his boards that have a report due tonight. I am right behind him, and I do have one committee board that I'm on that have a report for. It's the LTAC, Lodging Tax Advisory, and we've met twice in the past month, and one of the things that we're trying to do is, is clean up the, the application for applying for funds to, for LTAC. And one of the things about the application is that it, you know, it's a reimbursement application, so if you, you know, spend dollars on your, on your event and your, your event, you know, benefits the City of Lacey in some capacity or another, you can apply for funds that will reimburse you for doing that here in the city. But in the, in the, in the way that the application is going to be structured now, we're trying to drill down a little bit deeper into, you know, more specifics, and, you know, are you booking rooms in the City of Lacey? And these are just so that we can get some, some better metrics out of the application so that can, you know, we can be better guided as, as a committee. So that application is due out tomorrow?
It's out.
It's out now. And so it's, I knew this week, and I thought, I thought, I think it's tomorrow. So it is out because it was due on the 3rd, wasn't it? Yeah. So application due on the 3rd. So what that means is, is, you know, anybody that wants to apply for LTAC funds, their application, that application is out there for them to fill out. They can apply for LTAC funds, and we will have our funding cycle later this year, and hopefully we will get, you know, a lot of newer people, but there are some events that we are also hoping that will return, and we've funded in, in previous cycles. So that is my report. Next, we have Councilmember Cox.
Right. I have one report. The Regional Housing Council met on July 27th, and we got a chance to hear from Josefine Magagna, who is the new director of the Thurston Thrives organization, and she's lovely, and I'm excited to see them moving forward with that. We had a presentation on the diversity, equity, and inclusion work by Confluence Consulting toward forming a homeless crisis response steering committee, and this group would have members who have actual lived experience with being homelessness, and the vision for this is to have a steering committee that substantially shifts the conversations and decisions that define homeless crisis response by including those members who are actually living it or have lived it to, you know, these are decisions being made for them, and the idea is to have decisions made by them. So more to come on that, including how, having a facilitated discussion about how the Regional Housing Council wants to interact with this steering committee. That they're going to be sending out nominations this month and hope to get that group formed in September. And I guess the biggest news from there is, I think I reported last time, that the Department of Commerce reported that Thurston County was in line for $19.6 million, I believe it was, for the right-of-way funding for relocating and housing individuals who have been living along the freeways, and we're going to get $35 million, almost twice what we asked for, and that's going to help us buy one hotel that would be used for transitional housing to begin with, and gradually work up to be permanent supportive housing, 24 beds at the Unity Common Homeless Shelter, and those won't be like, there's not 24 open beds right now, it's just the beds will, as they turn over, will become made available as people who've been living in the right-of-ways need housing. There was talk about a second hotel, but it's sounding less likely that that will happen. We don't want to bite off more than we can chew, and so there we go with that, but, and there, there are other uses for this money as well, but it's just really exciting to see that they appreciate what we're doing here in Thurston County, the communities working together to try to solve this on a regional basis rather than all these little silos struggling. It was $135 million total for the state, and we're getting 35 of that, which tells me something.
That is awesome.
Yeah.
You know, the, the homeless are equally as excited because I've talked to them, you know, and I go and I hang out and I talk, and, and, you know, I've told them about, you know, the things that are happening with the Department of Commerce dollars, and some of them are very interested in listening, and so they actually, we just kind of sit and have conversations, and, and, you know, literally said to me, Malcolm, you know, none of us really want to be out here, you know, and, and I, and I, you know, my heart goes out to them, and, you know, they've heard about this, not at the level that we have, but they have heard about this and are equally as excited to... heard about this and are equally as excited to get off the streets in a lot of cases, especially down on Ensign Road, because that's usually my first stop and I go talk. But I'm very glad to hear that this is moving lightning fast for the state. And like Councilmember Greenside said a couple meetings ago, we're, we're so excited that the, the state is, is jumping in and, and actually helping us. And we're having access to those types of resources. And the speed that this is moving at is just amazing. So I hope it, hope it works out.
Me, too.
Next, we have Councilmember Greenside.
I have one report this evening as well. So TCOM 911 met on the third yesterday. Just a couple of things from that meeting. Budget-wise, everything is working smoothly. We are pretty much right on budget, both on revenue and expenses. So that's good. The radio project that you've heard me talk about for the last, oh, year and a half now probably, is moving along slower than we'd like but moving. You know, COVID and supply chain issues have really held up some of the, some of it. But it is on track to be complete by early '24. Subscriber equipment is in, in now. It is here locally, and it's being, going through the installation process with a lot of that. Most of the police agencies are completed. We're starting on the fire agencies. And then there'll be quite a few more steps along the way. But we should have it complete by, like I said, beginning of '24. Dispatch training program that are, all of our dispatchers and call takers go through here in Thurston County for TCOM, just was awarded a national designation that only 91 call centers in the country have received. So that was a pretty, pretty big deal for them. Just shows how good, the great work that they're doing. And then the last thing was a pretty in-depth conversation regarding staffing. Staffing just continues to be a real struggle. It is just difficult to get enough people. So those people that we have working in our TCOM center are working just a lot of overtime hours right now just because of shortages of people. So we've got a lot going on. We're trying to, trying some new things for the recruit and hire system. So I'll bring you more information on that as it's available. That is my report.
So this is the conversion from analog to digital systems?
Correct.
County-wide?
County-wide, yep. All the radios will be every, you know, we have, and, you know, this goes back, like I said, several years now, but we had some real issues with our current radio system to the point that there's some buildings, even in Lacey as an example, out in the Hawks Prairie area, where our police and fire radios don't work in those buildings. So if police officer's in that building and he's to communicate with people, he can't. He's like, he's got to pull out his cell phone and then call because the radios won't work. So we have some areas of the county that are just dead spots. This system will fix all of that. They'll, they'll have full radio communication in all the buildings and in all parts of the county. So it's an absolute necessity from a public safety standpoint.
Awesome. Councilmember Stedman.
Thanks, deputy mayor. I reported on Community Action Council last meeting. They didn't have a meeting this month. Neither did Nisqually River Council. And, or last meeting, I reported on Thurston County Law and Justice, I mean, but Community Action Council and Nisqually River Council did not have meetings, as my report.
Councilmember Kunkel.
I have no report.
And Councilmember Vasquez.
I also have no report.
Okay. Well, then, we might have set a record for time. And since we are at the end of our agenda, I will have to call this meeting adjourned. And in the words of Mayor Ryder, keep it classy, Lacey. This meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
One day, I'm not going to.